I'd like to call it Tuesday, January 16th, 2024 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fansla, Cluke, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have two presentations tonight. I'd like to start with the Youth Leadership Council. I'd like to invite them at the beginning of each year just to kind of give a recap of the prior year. Welcome. You own the place. You're here all the time. Thanks. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having us. I am Kira Montiel.
And I'm Christine Holder.
And we're with the Papillion Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. So we are just going to inform you about some events that we have been helping out with in the past six months. So the youth council is celebrating over 20 years of service to the Papillion community. The council has members from grade seven through 12th grade, representing both high schools, monarchs, and titans, as well as both middle schools, Papillion and Liberty. It also has students from Marion High School, Creighton Prep, and some homeschool programs. The council has a membership of 41 students currently. We are a diverse group of young leaders focusing on all ages and services of the Papillion community. Here is a small summary of what we are actively involved in during 2023. So last year, our first ever Black History Month celebration was held at Papillion Landing. We had speakers such as JD Davis and Wayne Tate. It was very successful and we're excited to have it again this year on February 3rd at the landing from 5:00 to 7:30. Pioneer Days is held every year for 4th graders in the Papillion La Vista Community School District, and we clean the old jail in preparation for the tours. We help out with the annual Easter egg hunt in Halleck Park. We clean and maintain the Halleck Park Pollinator Garden on the north side of the park. And we participate in setting up and cleaning up for the Patriot Ride at the Sumter Amphitheater. We make and assemble meals for the local homeless shelters. And we participate in the Papillion Race Series by manning water stations for the racers. We also march and carry the city banners during the Papillion Days Parade. And we also attend and honor the Remembrance Flag presentation for Leroy Wilson Pager.
Also, we were able to participate in the Portal Schoolhouse Days by helping out with several of the races and things that they had. And this year, we also hosted our first Hispanic Heritage Festival. Once again, during the fall, we were able to help out the Nation of Patriot organization when they returned to Papillion. And we also partnered with the Rec Department and Papio South to host Halloween Safe Night for over a thousand kids. This year, we were able to host our Holiday Card Campaign. We sent over 300 holiday cards to several different elderly shut-ins and veterans throughout different nursing homes. We participated in Winter Wonderland again this year by handing out candy canes. And we were also able to partner with the Historic Schoolhouse Society and putting on the Old German Luncheon after a long absence. This is a holiday favorite and one of our biggest projects and accomplishments of 2023. This year, some of our members were able to help make gingerbread houses for the Papillion Area Historical Society again. And along with these events and activities, we continue to work at our monthly road cleanup and meet at least once a month for our regular council meeting. We stay busy and active because we love Papillion and we love the people who live here. Volunteer Nebraska nominated us for their superhero program. We are proud to say that we are one of the strongest and most active youth councils in the state and even the region, from Kansas City to Chicago to Denver. In years to come, we hope to make our council to the national stage because we love Papillion. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hold on a second. Okay, so first off, I'm going to tell you that I was one of the council members who was on the council 20 years ago when this started. And I thought at that time, well, okay, let's see how this goes. That's a good thing. And I'm very, you know, when you say you're one of the strongest and most active, I'm very proud of that. You've done a wonderful job. Specifically, you say you have a membership of 41 students. How does that compare to past numbers of membership? Is this the top, lowest? How's it going?
I'd say in the past couple of years since COVID happened, it did decrease a little. But we do have a strong 41 members that show up and help out at every single event.
Well, I know at one point there was some talk about difficulty getting students from both the high schools. Are you experiencing that?
We don't really experience that that much anymore because we do have business cards that we hand out to people that we think would be good for the council, like our peers in class.
Well, you know, I see this list of things you do and yeah, those are the kinds of things that should attract more students to want to, you know, join the organization. So I would encourage you to keep doing those things and getting more and more people involved if you can and making the youth council something that is well thought of throughout the both high schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And because I've been, my involvement with the League of Municipalities and even the National League, I've seen some exposure to the other youth councils and I would agree, this is a really strong one. They've had, I think, two opportunities, three opportunities to go to national conferences. And probably one of the bigger ones there are other than like your Boston's and that type of deal. So very impressive and I think it's a great time for us just to thank Officer Tackett as well. When it was first formed, I think it was the liaison to the city, I think it was in administration. And then, I don't know, Phil, 13 years ago or something like that is when it moved over to the police department, something like that. And I think some of the youth councils have thought, that's an odd place to put the youth council, but the relationships that our officers have with people through the SRO programs and the DARE programs and just being out in the community, to me, it's the most natural and especially when you got like Officer Tackett. So Phil, I just want to thank you for everything you do. And thank the council for the support as well. It really is a youth-directed program, so they're coming up with those ideas. So great youth. We have a special presentation and I'd like to invite Chief Gotchop. There was an ice rescue. I'm assuming most of you, most people have heard about that. It was in the news and it's a pretty significant event. And so I want to do some recognition and we wanted to make sure we did it in front of council. Chief?
Mayor, City Council, I just want to bring to your attention what we call in the fire service, a good outcome. As first responders, we affect people's lives every day, but then there are times when time becomes the essence of survival. Time becomes important, training becomes important. And in those events, when those all come together, it creates a good outcome. Let me explain. On January 3rd, 2024, at about 10:00 PM, crews were dispatched for a water rescue at Walnut Creek Lake. Female victim was in the water with her three dogs. Upon arrival, Engine Two crews found the female victim. She was barely hanging on to a tree branch in the water. The female victim was unable to self-rescue due to the temperature of the water that was draining her strength and being unable to negotiate the ice shelf. Firefighter Lapuza had his ice rescue suit donned prior to arrival and immediately made entry and found the victim. As firefighter Lapuza approached the victim, he could hear the victim counting, trying to keep her mind off of what's happening. She was losing her grip. As he approached her, as he came close, the female victim immediately grabbed onto him by putting him into a bear hug. At that exact moment, she wasn't able to hold on and he was there at the right time. Firefighter Lapuza was able to secure her with the ice rescue line while Captain Ty Cole and FAE Todd Remmers pulled them ashore immediately, getting her out of the frigid conditions. The dogs were able to self-rescue, one being pulled out with the crews and the others getting rescued by animal control once they arrived on scene. The victim then was put into care by Medic Three firefighters, Borden, Parker, and Strobe, transported to the Bellevue Medical Center for evaluation. The victim was evaluated, was released two hours later, no medical issues. The fire service is team-oriented. As an organization, we're dependent on its members, being able to assume a variety of roles and to complete an objective. What made this a success was all of these men here before you, the training that they take, taking it seriously, how to wear the proper PPE, how to handle technical rescues, as we would call this. A unified command, everyone reporting to one supervisor, being able to take direction immediately, and the spirit of working together. Not everybody jumping into the water, but one person making that effective while the others supported that role. I'll say this, this is the first recognition of a life-saving medal to the members of Papillion Fire Department and I see many to come as you see men like this, put their lives on the line every day, take their jobs seriously, train as if to prepare for any event such as this. So let me read each citation because I think it's just important. So for the life-saving medal, for your actions involving an ice rescue that occurred on January 3rd at Walnut Creek Lake, the quick actions you and your crew resulted in the removing of a female victim and her three dogs who fell through the ice. These actions reflect highly on Papillion Fire Department, the City of Papillion, and the traditions of the fire service. Hold your applause till I get them all out, so. Exceptional performance for your actions involving an ice rescue that occurred on January 3rd, 2024 at Walnut Creek Lake. The medic team's quick intervention of ALS care and the transport of a patient that had fallen into an icy lake resulted in a complete recovery with minor injuries. These actions reflect highly on the Papillion Fire Department, the City of Papillion, and the traditions of the fire service. And then last but not least, it's, these events don't happen without good command. This is for Battalion Chief Jeremy Orr. For your actions involving the ice rescue that occurred on January 3rd at Walnut Creek, your command presence, direction of resources, and overall safety of crews led to the successful rescue of the victim and her dogs. These actions reflect highly on Papillion Fire Department, the City of Papillion, and the traditions of the fire service.
Why don't you guys turn and face the crowd and let's give them a round of applause. Chief, don't leave yet. He also gave some awards not too long ago for another technical rescue, a situation with an elevator. And just because he's here and we're on the topic, I think it'd be good if you'd share a little bit about that. Just again, I think to give people an appreciation for the skills within your department.
So in July of this last year, we responded down to Louisville to the cement factory. Crews working at that cement factory were in this elevator that was stuck five stories up and were unable to get out through any way or means of themselves. So they weren't in extreme danger, but heat conditions were high, dusty conditions associated with that. Louisville Fire Department responded initially, but just had no equipment to get up there. We weren't able to get any ladder trucks close by to help those victims that were in the elevator. So they requested Papillion Fire knowing that we have a special operations unit or we do special operations, technical rescues. That's confined space, it's high angle rescue, it's trench rescue, things that, as our city grows, we're going to see more and more of these types of events. As they get on scene, crews went up to the upper stories, they had to rappel down into where the elevator was to retrieve these folks, bringing them out, as I said before, in very high heat conditions, dusty conditions. When you get into technical rescues, you got to worry about your responder as well. That's where we get ourselves in a little bit of trouble is when we react too quickly, not making sure that things are safe, not making sure our rigging is appropriate so that we don't become part of the problem as well. So my time here, I have seen professionalism within this organization that I am very proud of and I want to continue to maintain that. These folks work hard, train every day, and provide very good services for those that we serve. So I do appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Seconded by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero yes.
Motion passes. We have a pretty brief agenda tonight. We don't have any items for introduction and we don't have any public hearings. Item F1, Resolution R240010, a resolution to accept the dedication of Street Rightofway for one tract of Cedar Dale Road, right of way east of South Washington Street. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240010? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Seconded by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero yes.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Now we just have reports. Administrators, report please.
I was really hoping you were going to forget that.
Mr. Kersma reminded me.
Darn it. I knew there was someone. I do want to thank our professional firefighters for all that they do. Unfortunately, they're not here anymore, but you see that professionalism daily and just to reiterate that. So this was one big save, but they have saves every day where we're so grateful we have the professional fire department. So thanks again and thank you, Chief, for all that you do for that. And then I do want to give another huge thank you to professional public works, parks, and recreation employees who have braved the weather over the past week to keep our streets, our sidewalks, and our facilities as safe as possible. The crews are currently back to normal operations. However, we are expecting another snow event Thursday and to Friday, so expecting to go back to that shift work that they're doing. Also, just an FYI, we have been receiving some comments and questions about the downtown snow removal. The crew, there are a couple crews coming in tomorrow at 4:00 AM to remove that snow, so hopefully that'll make it easier for the citizens to go back downtown and kind of get back to normal operations with that. And then along the same lines of weather related, I did want to let you guys know that the Papillion Landing Field House did experience a significant mechanical issue within the field portion of the facility due to the extreme cold. Thankfully, the repairs will be covered by insurance, so that's a really good thing. However, it will unfortunately be several weeks before we can open the field turf back up. The rest of the field house is open, just not the turf portion. There does need to be some substantial repairs needed to some of the mechanical equipment and the fire sprinkler suppression system that we have there. And we're still assessing the total amount of damage and the timeframe on what it will take to fix that. But I do want to give Parks and Maintenance and our Recreation staff a huge thank you. They spent the weekend and Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday at the facility, working with some third-party vendors to help us get the facility in the best condition we can. And then there are just a couple of upcoming events I just want to remind you guys of. Just to follow up on the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council that they gave, their update that they will be hosting another Black History Month celebration on Friday, or excuse me, on February 3rd from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM in the Papillion Landing Chrysalis Ballroom. There's also the 55-plus club will be hosting a Valentine's Day party on February 9th at 11:00 AM in the community gym. And this event is open to anyone 55 and older and they can register for this event at the landing at the front desk and they can, as long as they register by January 30th. And also typically elected officials and city staff help serve that. So if you're able to help do that, please let Robin or Tracy know. It's always a fun time, so if you can make it, it'd be great. And then the landing will be hosting a health and wellness fair on January 26th from 8:00 AM to 10, or from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And vendors will be in the community gym and lobby, they'll cover physical, social, mental, and financial health. And then finally, just my last comment is last week I had my final Leadership Nebraska Class of 15 session in Lincoln. And I do want to thank all of you and Mayor Black for allowing me to attend that. It was a great program and I'm very grateful that I was able to do it. As part of the program, I was able to tour across the state over the past eight months to see what other communities are doing for economic development and leadership development. And our Class 15 graduation is next month in Lincoln. I think that's when it's officially over, but I think, I'm pretty sure I graduated. For me, like the time part that takes all the time constraints over, but again, thank you. It was, it took a lot of time away and thank you, Mark, for helping cover I was gone. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Committees, I believe F and A met. Mr. Ingberg, I think you're the chairman?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, we met after the council meeting on January 2nd. Made two items on the agenda, both had to do with the Police Department renovation project. We had some discussion about some proposals that were put forth for the renovation and some questions. All of the members of the committee also took a personal tour of the facility with Chief Widdit. The second item had to do with the project because it has to do with funding the project. And ultimately, we decided to recommend unanimously to take 1.5 million that was accidentally not carried over, to move it into a carryover position now, to apply that towards the project. And the remainder, because we, as a committee, didn't feel like we wanted to, we wanted to do it right and to do it all at one time if we could. Also coming before the council, we recommended, because of some recommendations from our financial advisor to the city, Leffler, that we do a public safety bond and that'll be forthcoming. That bond, by the way, will not increase any taxing or mill levy because it's offset by some bonds that are paid off. So we made those two recommendations and they'll all be coming before the full council, I assume. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the new committee that was created out of, I think, the last council meeting, the ad hoc for the Affordable Housing Plan, that met for the first time tonight. And I understand Mr. Fansla was the chair.
Yes, I am. They, yeah, four-nothing vote, so. So yeah, it was the, just so everybody knows, it was the first time, obviously, we got together. We obviously had an agenda, mayor, the mayor gave us a good 10 or 15-minute summary of kind of things that have happened, what, where the city's been, some of the partnerships that, and the conversations that are going around the community on affordable housing. So we all appreciated that. We spent quite a bit of time talking with staff, with Travis, about pocket parks and some, maybe some new development regs that could be coming to the committee. And then if it gets, obviously, if it gets out of committee, it'd come to the full council. But some new development regs that might help with the affordability of housing in our community. So Travis is going to continue to work on those and report back. We didn't set a date for a future meeting, but we'll work on that, obviously, as Travis gets some of his work done. We also talked about terms, so what are certain terms? What is affordable housing? What is a missing middle? Not that it's, that's affordable, but we had a good conversation about a lot of housing issues and terms going on around the community and other communities. So we'd like staff to define those terms for us so we're all speaking the same language. We think that'd be a good idea. We talked about, again, some zoning updates. We talked about some pending developments that are in the approval process or stuff that we've seen. We got a little bit of update on some of those. One of the agenda items was to review any amendments to the plan. We didn't have any amendments to the plan that we just passed a few weeks ago, but we did have a discussion about the motion that Councilman Gaines made at that meeting and we think there was, well, we understand there was some misunderstanding. So what we decided to do, and we decided without the attorney present, that we could do this administratively. The intent of the motion made by Councilman Gaines a few weeks ago, on page 39, I know you probably don't have your plan in front of you, but it lists priority action items and that's not what was, that's not what the motion was at that meeting. So we informed staff that we would like that change from priority action items to specific action items. And there are three actions listed in the plan. We had some conversation about, you know, if these, if it's remained priority, which was never the intent, that means there were more actions to be done. But like I said, during the last council meeting when we voted on it, there were specific actions. So we're going to, we're going to make that change.
Older people.
So we're going to go ahead, we're going to go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and make that change and, and you know, the new document will be put on the website or wherever it's going to be available to everybody. And so the action items for the next 12 to 18 months, that was on our agenda. Again, Travis and staff are going to work on some proposed code changes. The committee will get back together and I'll report back after we do. So thank you very much. I'd like to add, just for the public, the committee is me, Mr. Enberg, Mr. Gaines, and Mr. Mumgarth, and staff that were there was Amber, Mark, and Travis. So thank you all.
Yeah, and since that is a new committee, the way that those four were picked, I just took the four council members that were not on the audit committee, I just put over there that way between the two committees. Every council member had an assignment on kind of those ad hoc committees. So that's how that one was formed. So appreciate that. And it would probably be like golf, it'll be more ad hoc when it's needed, we'll pull it together. And I think on that note, those on the golf committee, I think that, that might have already been scheduled because that hasn't gotten together in quite a while. So it'd be good to get that together before we start the next budget cycle and the next golf season. So you should have that invitation as well. I don't think any others met. Any comments from the floor? Any council comments? We got a couple of students here. We did. Where'd our student go? Go on hiding? We got somebody in the back. Students always have to come up and tell us why they're here. Got to come on up. You got to come up and tell us your name and what brought you here.
Um, I was supposed to have danced tonight, but my dad is still working. He was supposed to pick me up at 6:00, but since he was still working, my mom decided that I could stay here, so my dad didn't have to figure out how to take off work early.
What's your name?
Hannah.
Welcome. And actually, her mom and dad work for the city. That's Nicole's daughter, so welcome. Any council comments? From the last couple of weeks, Ms. Powers and myself, we met with the wastewater agency. I think the biggest thing, well, we didn't meet with the agency, we met Dan Hoynes. You know, Dan was selected as the new full, the first full-time administrator, so he's not at the county anymore. So he's doing rounds with all of the cities to what are our big issues, what are our concerns? So we had, I think we had a real good meeting with him. And then Michelle Andall, who's now in the community development role, we had a meeting with a couple of different groups regarding the creative district legislation that was passed and I think we had talked about as a priority item. So we're starting to do work and get that started. So hopefully you'll see something. So we're starting to do work and get that started, so hopefully you'll see something about that. Maybe in the spring, you'll start hearing a little bit more about that, and you'll be involved in some of that. We got to do some sessions to understand what are the boundaries, what are the goals, so we'll find ways to plug you into that as appropriate. The United Cities just met again today. Not much going on yet down at the legislature, so this is the second year of the biennium. It's a short session, so it's a sixty-day session, so they don't have a lot of time to get things done. The first ten days are all bill introduction, and I think today was day nine, so tomorrow will be the last day for any bills to be introduced. And from an update we had earlier today, there's a lot of bills going to be introduced tomorrow. So it'll be interesting what the next fifty days of the legislature holds, but as much as possible. If there are bills that you specifically are concerned about, want monitored, want us to support, want us to oppose, let us know what those are, because we're trying, we got some mechanisms in place to be tracking specific bills, where they're at, and when they're having hearings. So let us know if there's anything you're concerned with there, and we'll monitor those. And then based on the Affordable Housing Action Plan that the council approved the last time, we did have a, some series of good meetings with the Housing Foundation of Sarpy County. They have a pool of funds, a lot of it was post-flood, when a lot of housing was destroyed. They're working on getting affordable and workforce housing back in place, and they've got some good programs going. They've got a new initiative called the Affordable Workforce Housing Initiative, and so we've had some meetings with them. I think one thing that might be applicable for Papillion, actually through Habitat for Humanity, they've got pools of funds for home improvement, and they want to specifically target Sarpy and Cass County and veterans. And where that ties to us is we recently adopted the property maintenance code, and so because that is a regulatory item, if there's somebody with a, with a problem property, they're not able to maintain it if it comes under property maintenance, then we may be able to tie them back to the home improvement funds that are available through Habitat, and those individuals now could get their homes fixed up. So we're going to work on some education to understand those programs a little bit more and tie those together if people have that need for funding of fixing their houses, especially on the owner occupied. So we'll keep you informed on that. I think that's the main thing, just again, I think as everybody, a big thanks to Public Works and Facilities and Parks on the snow events, a lot of long nights and days and some tough conditions, and I know they were awful tired, so Mike, just pass on the thanks again. And thanks to the residents, some of these, when you have these type of events and somebody's street isn't cleaned perfectly, sometimes we get those fault, those calls and those complaints, and I'll tell you, I don't think we got any. People were very gracious, I think they knew what was happening, and I think they were staying home too, which helped. But again, we're supposed to get another event Thursday, so pass on our thanks. Any other comments from council? Not? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
We are adjourned.